Tonight's meeting is. Our C A O clerk, Mark Figliumi. Unfortunately, his father has passed away over the weekend. So, Mayor and Council and the rest of the township wish to send our condolences to Mark and his family. The deputy clerk advises that there are amendments to this evening's agenda. Administrative administration circulated on Monday, June 21st. The administrative activity report, item 6.3, an update to the closed session report. Item 10.3 and an updated report from item 10.4. The resolution to enter closed session should be amended to include as authority relating to items 10.3. Paragraph 239 to be. Personal information about identifiable individuals and to include items 10.4 authorities. Paragraphs E and F. Do any members of council wish to make other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, okay, can I have a mover and second or for motion to approve the agenda as circulated? Counselor Park and Counselor Tedesco. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Are there any declarations of interest to disclose? Seeing none, there are no presentations or deputations, so we will move on to item three. Minutes of the previous meetings. The open session minutes of the special meeting, special session of council held May 15th, 2021. Are at items 3.1 of the agenda, the minutes of the last regular meeting. On June 7th are in items 3.2 of the agenda and the closed session minutes for that meeting are an item 10.2. Are there any errors or omissions to note in the open session minutes? Are there any errors or omissions to note in the closed session minutes? Okay, seeing none. They have a mover and second for motion to prove the open session minutes of items 3.1 and 3.2. Counselor Park and Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. May have a mover and second for motion to approve the minutes of items. Remind you, sorry. Oh. Yeah, okay. The next matter is item 4.1 is the table citing resolutions of counselor or Ms. Evans.
Yeah, the resolution didn't include the closed minutes.
Okay. So it can have a.
Pass 10.2.
Okay, can I have a mover and second to approve? Items 10.2 of the closed session minutes. Counselor McDonald, Counselor Park. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Sorry about that. Okay, 4.1 is table citing resolution circulated by other municipalities. Are there any matters? Any members of council wish to have it pulled and bring up for the next meeting? Seeing none, no, okay. 4.2 correspondence from the Ministry of Northern Development Energy and Mines relating to the expansion. For the natural gas program, the letter advises that Red Rock's application was not approved. Do any members of council have questions for administration?
Yes, please, how do we go to the next stage, whatever that is? I think it's stage two. I assume we've already have an application in.
Actually, Mark was working on obtaining some additional information on this. Just because he couldn't really find a lot of background information in the office. So he has contacted Michael Gravel's office and was just waiting for a response. So he will speak on it more, he'll be able to speak on it more next time.
Good. Can we put that on the agenda for next time?
Sure, yeah.
Is there a mover and second for motion to receive the correspondence for information? Counselor Tedesco. Counselor Park. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Committees, boards and agencies, the next matter, item 5.1 is the minutes from the library board meeting from its meeting in May. Do members of council have any questions for administration? Counselor Mayor.
Yeah, I just had a question regards to both of the committees. Are they not supposed to have a link posted for the public to attend at all these meetings as well?
So you're talking in regards to the board meeting of the library?
Yeah, to both actually, the library and the committee of adjustment meeting. Like notification, is it, is it follow the same as the environmental?
I will ask the library board about that. We did post for the committee of adjustment. That was a public meeting. But I will get back to, I will get back to you about the library board.
Where was the committee of adjustment posted?
On the website. Yeah, letters were sent out and it was posted and available on the website to anyone interested.
Would it might be an idea to post it on the public bulletin board as well?
Yeah, we could do that next time, for sure.
Okay, is there a mover and a second to receive? To receive the minutes? Counselor Tedesco, Counselor Park. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Items 5.2, the minutes from the committee of adjustment meeting, May 31st, 2021. Do members of council have any questions of administration?
Can you explain where the property was that was being discussed in this matter?
So the property being a vacant piece of property didn't have a municipal address like a fire number. But it was across highway 528 from, I think it was 729 or 749. It's a very unusually shaped piece of land, the map was on the notice. There's a, there's a lot that the municipality owns that has a cedar tree on it. And this property is kind of around that lot. If that helps.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so what the meeting was about was the, the people who have purchased the property wanted to sever a section off. In which they appeared to that they want to build, build a house on it, so. We had to go through that process, which none of us have done before. So we did have a training session before the meeting, which was facilitated by Ms. Evans. And it went well and we learned a lot, so it's quite the procedure. So any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a mover and second to receive the minutes? Counselor Park, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. For support is item 6.1, the director of operations. Do members of council have questions for Mr. Westerman? Counselor Mayor.
Hey, Larry, I was just going through that. Did you receive the package the environmental committee submitted with all the research documents attached to it? There was a fairly large document that was submitted.
No, I didn't. I remember Mark was gonna forward that to me, must have forgot, but I have not seen that.
Okay. Um, we do have an extra copy there, I think, I don't know if we can get that forwarded off to you as well. That's got a bunch of excellent information in it as well.
In regards to.
Sorry, Gori, you were cut off there, you hit your.
Sorry, it's, it's got all the information with regards to the pros and cons of beaver deterrents. Doing it humane way. So, yeah, it had, it had all the studies with suggestions and everything as well too, so. And then some success stories and ton of references too, so, yeah, we've got that available. We'll get that forwarded off again. All right.
Is there a mover and second? For a motion to receive the report? Counselor Park, Counselor Tedesco. All in favor? Hands rising, so motion is carried. Item 6.2 of the report from the community development officer. Do any members of council have questions for Ms. Davis? No questions? I know she's been very busy in the office.
So I am requesting the participation of two council members to complete the tourism community self-assessment. So if I can have two volunteers, then I can send those off to you, either paper copy or email copy. And I can connect with you to go through that process.
So I see Counselor Tedesco and Counselor Mayor are interested.
Okay.
May I have paper copy, please?
Yes, I will get that for you, Counselor Tedesco.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can I have a mover and second for motion to receive the report? Counselor Tedesco, Counselor Mayor. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Okay, item 6.3 administrative report. Do members of council have questions of administration?
Rosalie, it appears that this is kind of a no-brainer that. All the community should be represented by one community or whatever. What's the, what's the holdup in your perception?
For the police service board? I'm sorry, what's the context of the question?
The police service board. There's a number of communities that are to be represented by one. To make it one, one group, so to speak. But apparently there's some delays and is it some communities are not responding or what?
Yeah, yes, so it's, it's a classic when you deal with First Nation communities. They often don't respond to electronic communications, that's just not, it's not their tradition, it's not their way. And so Nick again has been trying to organize everything and has not had success in speaking with two of the communities. So we did get an extension on the time limit within which to file our report. And I'm not sure, actually, I haven't checked today to see if. If Ms. Barubi was able to reach anyone. But I had suggested that we not send in a report that says these people didn't respond. Like, I think we should make more of an effort. It's very difficult in COVID, of course. But we're working on it.
Rosalie, who's taking the lead in this project at this point?
Is it Nipig? Linda Barubi, Linda Barubi in Nipiggin. I believe she's the clerk, she might be the deputy clerk. This was initiated by the province when the Police Services Act was under review about two years ago. In, it's more of an issue in southern Ontario than it is in northern Ontario, but each detachment. Of a police community is led by one inspecting commander. And he has to go to all these police service board meetings. And so sometimes the police chief, and they're all at night because they're volunteers. So sometimes the police chief has to go to these extra meetings all the time. In one month, you might have to go to six meetings and it's all overtime. So they decided that each detachment should have one board and all the communities within that detachment would be represented on that board. So this is us trying to figure out amongst the communities that are represented on the board or by the detachment. Who's gonna sit at the board table? The province has to appoint people equaling 20%. The communities themselves appoint another 20%. So if you have 10 people, that's two community members and two provincial members. So 10 people, you don't want to have a huge, huge board because that makes it unwieldy. But they're willing to look at whatever we come up with together and put it forward unless it's crazy. You know, if we said we want a board of 30 people, the province is gonna say. I hope that helps.
Okay, is there a mover and second for motion to receive the report? This is 6.3. Counselor Mayor. Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. 6.4, the report information purposes, it relates to the submission of the province for the police services board composition for the. Nipiggin OPP detachment. Do members of council have any questions of Ms. Evans? I know we just spoke about it. Is there a mover and second for motion to receive the report? Item 6.4, Counselor Park, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. 6.5, information purposes, it relates to the need for Red Rock to pass a deeming or deming bylaw. At a future meeting for a particular property. This report explains the nature and the, and the effect of a deming bylaw. As background to the future bylaw presentation. Do members of council have questions of Ms. Evans?
Well, it certainly is an interesting item that you entered there. There's a ton of legalese in it. Fundamentally, what is this deeming bylaw supposed to do for us?
It's called a deeming bylaw because it deems a plan of subdivision to no longer apply to some property. That's why they call it a deeming bylaw. So if I own a big piece of property like the one the committee of adjustment dealt with at its meeting. And I want to sell a piece of it. I'm not allowed to do that unless I go through a process. And the process is either a land severance, which is what the committee approved on May 31st. Or the registration of a plan of subdivision, creating a whole bunch of lots and roads and. The thing that Bruno's is going through with you guys. So those are my two choices. In either case, once I've gone through that process, I can sell that piece of land or the several pieces of land. If I don't go through the process and I sell that piece of land without going through that process. The planning act says that the transaction in which I sell it is void. So I collect my money from you for buying the lot, but you don't actually get a lot. I have your money, you don't get a lot. It's quite, it's quite severe, that penalty. So you have to go through this process, but once you go through the process, you've legalized selling those bits and pieces of what used to be one large property. So in a plan of subdivision, there might be 40 lots. And in old plans of subdivision, the lots are often very small. And people these days like to have larger properties, so they'll buy two or three of the lots. And they'll put their house in the middle and they'll have acreage around because they've gathered these lots. But they can, because the lots are in a plan of subdivision, they can still sell off a piece, they can sell one of those lots. And this happened to us when I was in Nebing. There was a plan of subdivision by the lake and the lots, it was an old plan of subdivision, so the lots were small. A married couple owned a side-by-side lot and they had built their house on the one lot. But right up to the property line, like right on the property line. And then they sold the second lot, they had a marriage breakup and they sold the lot that didn't have anything on it. And the new people just inherited all these problems because the septic was too close and the wall of the house was too close. And it's just problematic, so it's better if we would have passed a deeming bylaw to merge those two lots, then they can no longer be sold separately. And there's all kinds of rules, if you build your house right up against your property line, there's all kinds of building code rules that weren't followed. And now that's a problem for the future owners. So this is why if you see this happen now, when this couple, the people that own this property have applied for a building permit. And so that's when it was realized, oh, like, is their house even on the property or is it straddling the property line? And it was just, we figured out that they own, I can't remember Sam if it was two or three lots, but. They own enough property to build, no problem, but we want to make sure that we don't have a problem in the future. And they can sell off a piece of this land and create a problem for someone else. Rosalie, the deeming bylaw.
We went through a similar situation right here in Red Rock, right across from the office, the township office. There's the, what used to be the call of the vault, the old CIBC bank. And then there was a vacant piece of property that the town then owns, the two of them, to make one reasonable sized lot. How did we duck that issue there?
Well, you probably haven't, you, the problem, the issue probably still exists, but because you're the township, you're not gonna. Create a problem for someone in the future. But if it was a private person who owned the two lots rather than the township, then I would recommend you do the deeming bylaw there as well.
Thank you.
Is there a mover and second for motion to receive the report? Counselor Park, Counselor Mayor. All in favor? All hands rising, motion is carried. No bylaws are presented for passing tonight. New business. Are there information items, announcements or new business issues to be brought forward? Seeing none, unfinished business. Marina operations, council's asked to have Marina operations place for future agendas as a reminder. Ontario will be moving into phase two of the reopening plan. All things considered as of July 2nd. Having said that, as of Friday, the goals have been met for phase two, but the province has yet to announce whether it is prepared to advance on July 2nd. If the province moves to phase two indoor activities for up to five persons, all wearing masks be permitted. Cleaning sanitizing between visits is to be expected. Other than that, there isn't much to add to this report. Do any members of council have questions of administration? Does anyone want to visit any opening of the Marina? Or will just stay the course and wait for the meeting in July?
Yeah.
Is that what, okay? So no changes to the current operations as of yet? Is there a mover and second to receive this report? Counselor Tedesco, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? Okay, motion is carried. I have so many papers here. Okay, closed session. Portion of the meeting may have a mover and second to go into closed session under the authorities as printed in the agenda. Counselor Park, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Okay, we'll end, or I mean, we'll exit out of this meeting.
Just a question for Sam, where would I find that link? Did it come from you? This one came from Zoom, that's why I didn't find it.
It was sent by email. For the session, from myself.
Who sent it?
I did.
It will be on your email.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, we'll log on to the closed session, please. Okay, we'll log on to the closed session, please. Okay, the minutes of the closed session portion of the minutes of the meeting and June 7th, 10.2 were approved together with the open session minutes and items 3.2. May have a mover and second or to author as administration to proceed as directed in closed session with respect to items 10.3 and 10.4. Councilor McDonald, Councilor Park? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Do any members of council have questions of Ms. Evans? Seeing none, can I have a mover and second or for motion to pass the bylaw? Councilor Park, Councilor Mayor? All in favor? Seeing four hands, Councilor Mayor, Councilor McDonald, Councilor Park, Mayor Robinson? Motion is carried. Now the time being 7:47, there was no further business to attend to and the meeting is adjourned.